Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bailey, Commissioner Bunting.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Shopsi.
Here.
Commissioner Owens is absent today.
Commissioner Bailey, would you like to say that?
All bow your heads, please. Most gracious, Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the day that you've given to us and the blessings in it. We just pray, Father, especially for our military men and women overseas and at home, that you would keep them safe. We ask, Father, that you'd also help our first responders respond quickly and be safe and be comforting to the people that they serve. I also ask, Father, that you would be kind to us and kind to the farmers. We have rain coming in and it would be a nice rain that would help and be beneficial to all. We now ask, Father, you'd be with us through the rest of this meeting, do the things that are pleasing to the people of Grasha County. For it's the name I pray, amen.
Amen. Please stand.
It's on your other side.
You're turning that way, were you?
I know. It was funny. I thought, where the heck? Where the heck did it go? Chair, I never said it up. Okay. Okay, is there any addition or deletions to the agenda?
What was the agenda?
Order.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Okay. Recomment, is there anyone here that would like to do a comment? You'll have another option at the end of the meeting. Okay, one more time, is there anyone here that would like to say anything? Okay, we'll move on. Okay, consideration of the calendar.
So, we accept the consent calendar?
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Shopsi, second by Commissioner Bailey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Okay. The administration report.
All right. Good afternoon. See, we met last, uh, two weeks ago, Tuesday the sixth, uh, June sixth, excuse me, June third, I'm sorry, six month. I guess I should have rehearsed. In any event, since that, you know, I mentioned then that I, we would be changing the payroll from Wednesday to Thursday. Well, we had to back off of that just this pay period because we discovered that Thursday this week is Juneteenth and we didn't want to delay it till Friday, so. Uh, but it was, uh, on the sixth, I met with the department house, went through that, told them, and then I had to reverse course for a pay period. But during that meeting, um, foreshadowed the budget and you kind of described that process a little bit and talked about some of the challenges I had. We did have a Zoom call, I didn't participate in, but briefly with the the company that we work with in that regard. And I know from some of my colleagues in the county business that health insurance rates are going to go up, way up, significant increase, and that's certainly going to have an impact on our ability, you know, budget-wise, and so it's this year I trust it. In any event, there's going to be, uh, those types of things to deal with here in the near future. Uh, we had a quick roundtable, wound that up. The following week, the 11th, the budget packets were sent out to the departments. I would, don't have a lot to say other than that the departments are much more engaged than I think they're accustomed to. Some of them, maybe for even for the first time. It's really a learning experience for me not having the institutional knowledge and the historical perspective of the past several years to, you know, get into the budgets. Spending an awful lot of time looking at the historical trends and trying to. And we're also working on revenue projections. Uh, we're expecting the departments to return to budgets according to the calendar by July 3rd. So I trust some of them are already done. It's not a big challenge, some of the departments have a little larger scope and we're going to have to labor a little harder at it, but anyways, we've got that well underway. Then later in July, late July, first bit of August, we'll be meeting with them to go through the budgets and try to get things finalized. And they, the budget's just challenging this year because there's more involvement. Woodhills here, funds are changing, cleaning some things up, et cetera, et cetera. But if possible, if we can make enough progress, I would like to have us probably in July, or at least first meeting in August, maybe adjust the schedule to, um, move that budget hearing at the second meeting in September, try to maybe do it the first meeting in September so we can move away from the same day they were scheduled to adopt, if that's possible. I didn't like it when we did it, and if we can make progress, I think we should probably try to get that moved, but we don't have to do that tonight, I'm not suggesting that. Otherwise, things have moved along pretty well and, uh, we're having good cooperation and I think people are enjoying the, I shouldn't say enjoy, that might be a little strong, but appreciate being involved in the budget and that's been really a hot topic around here as of late. And that would conclude my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Bailey, would you like to tell us what you've been doing?
Well, let's see. Uh, the nights, on the Monday, the night, we had an open house and dedication to, at the Hamilton Township Hall. And I don't know how many attended, but it was well attended, probably sixty, seventy, I don't know how many probably there, but there was quite a bit. Uh, there was a fellow in here that cooked probably a hundred and eighty hot dogs. There you go. Plenty of hot dogs. Oh, it was well attended and everybody appreciated it. And they learned, what's nice about new things, you learn what you need to do. And soundproofing and other things that, but that's, that's the game, you know, you, you start out and then you improve. Uh, but it was, they've had a very nice hall, it was very well laid out, very well thought of, so. And it was good. Also that evening, I went to North Star, had a North Star meeting. They're struggling with a lot of dangerous buildings that light in that township, that town, North Star. Uh, we're trying to help them wade through that, it's been very difficult. We have some very difficult residents that, uh, don't like to cooperate. We're working on it. Then on the 10th, I went to Lafayette Township where we talked, uh, and they're talking about possibly building a new hall. New hall would be located north of the one that's currently there. It would be what they call the ball field, where the school was at originally.
Yeah.
And so they're going to be doing that and taking care of that. Um, they're right now looking for a grant to help them out there and I, they asked me and I have no idea, maybe you could check with, I don't know of any grants available for stuff like that. That's where we're at there. Then I went to Wheeler Township. Uh, Wheeler Township, uh, had a very good meeting there. They have, or started, they, they did the beginning process of adopting a build, a dangerous building ordinance. What is a dangerous building ordinance? It gives, gives them the ability to have a building condemned through this ordinance and being able to take it down. The end result would be taking it out, down out of them because it's dangerous. So they're starting on that. Uh, if that proves well, I think we're going to have a lot of townships look at that and be able to do that. One of the things that they're going to have to do though is they're going to have to step up because it's going to cost them. Going to cost them lawyer's fees and it's going to cost them, if the party is not willing to take it down, they're going to have to take it down. And then they can be placed down in real estate taxes, that's how, that's how things are done. But at least it's a, it's a positive thing, moved in the right direction, hopefully we can take care of some of those buildings in Wheeler Township. Let's see, what else did I do? We're all set till today. Oh, um, on Saturday, out at the airport, they had what they call a Young Eagles event. And that was the EAA chapter out there, gave young people rides in airplanes. Now, I was, I was planned on attending, but circumstances wouldn't allow me to, so I haven't really checked to see how that came out, I'm sure it was successful because that was, they do, everything they do is successful, so that's all good. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Gay.
Okay, on June 10th, I attended the Elma City Commission meeting that only lasted fifteen minutes. Two people talked, the rest of the commissioners just don't talk. We received bids for the Elma transit building expansion. On June 11th, I attended the Arcade Township and we talked about a sign repair and they discussed Crash Day at the Armory in Elma where the the fair is at. Okay, and then on June 12th, I attended the Grasha Integrated Mental Health Meeting. Rachel Greder, Greder talked about recipient rights. There wasn't very many violations compared to how many people they serve, it was mainly in, um, adult foster homes. I don't know if you're familiar with adult foster homes. And, uh, they have a staff maybe of two people and six recipients, kind of, I don't know. And, uh, it's a hard job because they're very low functioning people and sometimes violent, but it's, it's just a hard job. So, and then, Joseph York talked about trust management after a major event, like maybe someone dying suddenly or something happens out of the blue that really affects people's lives. He talked about, uh, counseling. And I saw Steve, when you were under there, he wrote something about that. So, wow. And then Michelle's here, talk about the state wanting to reduce from ten regions into just three. Okay, and that was Thursday. Then Monday, yesterday, uh, June 16th, I attended the opioid settlement. Liz, I can never remember her name. Liz Braddock is going to attend our next board meeting, which is July 1st, right? July 1st. To present, uh, how to spend this great sum of money. It's a hundred and seventy-one thousand because it covers seventeen months. And then after that, seventeen months, it would just be yearly a hundred and twenty thousand. And, uh, I think, okay, oh. I think maybe Tom can correct me on this, but a lot of the money is going to go to a counselor at the jail because most people in jail are drug addicts. They're having problems with drugs. And so that'll be like on the front lines. A lot of that, that money's going to go there and, uh, anyways, so she'll be, um, she'll be here next minute.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Shopsi, you're next.
Well, I apologize to Hamilton Township, but the night of the ribbon cutting, I was headed to Detroit to pick up one of my kids off of an aircraft, which then tuned, I missed two of my township meetings because of that as well. But anyhow, I did attend the, um, Conservation District, uh, Grasha County, they have a couple of people who are interested in being on the board. They still have to do some questioning of them to see if they're going to be, um, appointed to be on the board. And then today, we had the courthouse security, um, meeting over at the EOC. Part of it you're going to hear about up here shortly when Tom does a presentation. But we're going to be hearing about things that need to happen. Matt will be eventually giving us a presentation on some things that need to be updated with our cameras, um, the security cameras, some of them are pretty old, I know he's talked with, with you and it's kind of alarming how old some of them are. And, um, they need to be on a, they need to get updated sooner than later. Um, so it's going to come down to, you know, some capital improvement stuff that we'll have to approve to, to get that stuff to take care of or to be taken care of, but I'll let the rest of it be, uh, talked about when Tom gets up here to talk about. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, I had a meeting at Bethany Township that would have been on the 10th of this month. And they're getting ready to put solar panels in. And other than that, it was a pretty short meeting. Then I also went to the Conservation District, not to their meeting, but because I had a question about these ticks. And only to find out that there's, like, what is there, thirty-five or forty different kinds of ticks?
Yeah.
I had no idea. So, you know, every time I see a bug, I'm thinking that could be a tick. And, uh, actually what happened is I found something in my screen at home. I took a picture of it and blew it up and that was a tick, but it wasn't the right tick. So anyway, you're getting educated on ticks now, we are. Um, I had no idea that there were so many kinds and that you have a deer tick, you have a, what, cow tick, yeah, ticks for everything.
Asian ticks.
So anyway, other than that, I've been pretty busy just doing, I don't know what, but that's pretty much mine, I'm going to go ahead and move this on.
Chairman, I got one more thing. Tim you had mentioned, and I, I thought back, we all got, at least I got it, and it was dressed with commissioners, so I assume everybody got to. For the Grasha Collaborative Council, please accept invitation, our next monthly meeting will be held Wednesday, June 25th at My Michigan Medical Center. At 1:30.
I got it.
Where's it at?
You said 25th.
My Michigan.
My Michigan.
In the Wilcox Room, I believe is what.
When you said that, I think I remembered.
That's where Wilcox Hospital.
Well, it's named after the Wilcox, the room is. It's, it's in the room at the medical center.
Is that the new building over in?
Or you go to the left?
Left, yeah, it's going the east side of the building.
Of the medical.
Right at the hospital. At the hospital, you walk in the east entrance and take an immediate, while you walk in.
You take a left.
Take a left in the Wilcox.
There, you can't miss it. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up so everybody knew that that was.
1:30 is what it's.
Yeah, 1:30 on the 25th.
On the 25th of June? June?
Next Wednesday.
Okay, thanks. I have one more thing to say too, but I don't remember what it was.
Roller is next Thursday also, it's way early this year, it's the fair, so.
Right.
So that's next Wednesday?
I'm just wondering where they're getting the sweet corn. Strawberry's I got today, though.
Oh, I know, uh, this, this Thursday is our meeting in Frankhamouth from nine till four. And that's going to be on energy. And so I'm thinking about taking my iPad to record some of it. In case somebody is, in case there's something that somebody might want to know. So, okay, let's go ahead and move on. Uh, the next thing here is Grasha Integrated Health Network.
Got to be, I mean, Matt gets upset if you're not right here. They can hear you.
He's my outside voice. Good afternoon, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. I'm here today to request your support in opposing, um, a plan from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, or MDHHS, to bid out the prepaid impatient, inpatient health plans, or PIHPs. Um, as you know, in Michigan, we have a long history of a publicly funded and locally governed community mental health system. Um, we provide services to the most vulnerable individuals in our communities, individuals that have severe mental illness, children with serious emotional disturbances, individuals with developmental and, uh, excuse me, intellectual and developmental disabilities, and individuals with substance use and coagulant disorders. Locally in Grasha County, we serve about eighteen hundred people, and as you'll see in the annual report that I shared with you, um, it goes over a little bit of what types of services those individuals get, but it also dives a little deeper into the fact that we do so much more than just those core services. What we do is we provide a safety net for the community and that safety net looks like our 24/7/365 crisis response, our mobile response teams, um, care that we provide in the schools, jail services, community outreach and education, and many, many more. I could go on, but I was under the understanding this was supposed to be a record-breaking short meeting, so.
We went way off that.
So unfortunately, this is not the first time that I have, um, asked of you guys to sign a resolution opposing privatization of our system. I'm hoping this will be the last, but who knows, if history is any indicator of future, it probably won't be. Um, so this is the next iteration or most recent iteration of an attempt to privatize our system. Should MDHHS, um, move forward with their plan, it will allow them to bid out the current publicly managed PIHPs. And those PIHPs, for those who don't know, they oversee the CMHS. There are managed care entity that oversee the forty-six CMHS that cover eighty-three counties in Michigan. Currently, there are ten, as Tim mentioned, and they're proposing to, to boil that down to three. But they will be allowing private health plans to come in and make bids on that. So we would lose the locally governed, publicly funded, um, well, still be publicly funded, but you guys will have less control over where those funds go if the private entities come in. So I'm seeking your support in opposing this. Unfortunately, this is a proposal that the department has put forward and is putting at a pretty sturdy, um, force without seeking any type of input from local county officials. Um, and you guys will be the ones, and your constituents in our community will be the ones that have to deal with the consequences of this. Should this become a privatized system, we lose that local accountability, that transparency. Um, decisions are made outside of the public view. Decision makers may not even be in the state of Michigan. When you look at these big private health plans, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield has several private health plans, if you think of it. It would also erode those safety net services that I shared with you a moment ago, um, as well as it'll take money out of the community. So when things go to the private sector, they have a much higher overhead and administrative cost than what we have here locally. And that means that less money gets funneled down to consumer care, day-to-day operations. So I'm seeking your support today, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about this, um, most recent iteration of the attempt to privatize the public behavioral health system.
Do you know what the basis is besides saving money? I think that's what they're trying to do and put it all back on individuals, but I mean, other than that, I don't know what, what do the state want to do?
Sure. Um, so opening up the system to privatization actually doesn't save money, it ends up costing a lot more money. Um, it's a money grab from the private plans, they've been at this for a long, long time. It's just a little unique that the, um, the state is now pushing this agenda. Uh, we've not seen it come from, you know, within our house before. Um, and their agenda is a little unclear, to be honest with you. They've not been able to truly articulate what the problem is that they're trying to solve with this. We've been calling it a solution to no problem.
Well, I can't tell you why they're doing it, but that's called money in their pocket, but I wouldn't say that.
So you're looking for us to pass Resolution 25-335, correct?
Correct.
So move that we approve Resolution 25-335, uh, for the Grasha Integrated Health Network.
Okay, motion has been made by Commissioner Shopsi and second by Commissioner Gay. All those, roll call on that.
Commissioner Shopsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Motion pass.
Thank you and good luck, hopefully it works.
Okay, next, we will go to the security of the courthouse.
Yeah, so we've been meeting as a, as a courthouse security team for, um, past six months to come up with a solution for our emergency exit doors. And our, uh, team, which consists of me, Commissioner Shopsi, Administrator Wood, Charlie Perkins, Fred Harris from Emergency Management, and a couple bailiffs, um, along with Tony Miller and Matt Hewitt from IT, have come up with a solution for our doors. Um, we're going to go through EPS, our current courthouse, uh, uh, provider, and so, um, they came up with, uh, twelve thousand four hundred and twenty dollars to implement this for our doors with a monthly fee of a hundred and thirty dollars, um, for, uh, for them to monitor, um, monitor our system. It's going to come with, uh, some sirens on the doors and that, so if a person goes through the door, it'll be, uh, be able to be detected along with the bailiff station will have a siren to alert them if somebody's went through the door as well.
They have also visual, the, the blue light will flash as well, so they're, it's both audio and, or audio and visual for the deputies here, so. This is just an upgrade to what we already have.
So I guess the question is twelve thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, that's just to secure the doors?
That's equipment to update our doors.
We already have a security, so something else going on, and that's just the doors out of this.
Yes, this one is, yeah, there's no cameras, this is just for updating the system for securing the door.
I work part-time, I can just sit there and monitor for a lot longer.
Plus the fifteen sixty a year for the maintenance.
For maintenance, yep, exactly.
Well, I'd make a motion, we go ahead and allow that to.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Bailey and supported by Commissioners, Commissioners Shopsi.
Clarify, this, along with the appropriate adjustments, budget adjustments as stated, is that, was that?
Okay, that, that just goes without saying, it's just.
Apologize, I should be asking if there's any questions, sorry about that. Okay, although I think there should be a roll call on that too.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Shopsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
If you guys have any questions, please just ask one security team members and they can fill you in.
Okay.
More, okay?
Thank you. Uh, prosecuting attorney, software, and attorney face.
Uh, I submitted a memo that kind of outlines, um, I don't want to belabor this, uh, I'm happy to answer questions and/or provide a summary if requested.
It's just kind of furthers what we're already, we started working on with this CarpeL software, this is just, it's kind of that next phase that you need to continue with.
It allows district court staff to get the information automatically as they currently do. There's two different software systems, and when we switch to CarpeL, uh, CarpeL won't talk to their system, so this is a patch to allow that. We've, the, our current system has always talked to their system and until the state of Michigan that provides the software for all of the courts gets on board with prosecutors, who all eighty-three of us in the state are now using the same software. So I presume fairly soon they'll uh, make the adjustment to their software, but I don't pretend to understand how the state of Michigan creates its software, so I'm not wildly optimistic. but I don't pretend to understand how the state of Michigan creates its software, so I'm not wildly optimistic.
I just want to be clear, this is our next phase. We have to have this in order to, to continue your office being able to communicate with our district court for the efficiencies that you were historically have been there, because the systems talk. Now we're not able to do that, so.
To be honest, it doesn't affect us. We'll still be able to do everything we want to do. It really affects district court. It's gonna put district court in a position of having to have a lot more work to rekey in everything. Every time you have another human entering in data, there's more room for errors, something like that. So it's to keep the current efficiency between our two offices that work together fairly seamlessly hundreds of times a day.
Ryan, do you have any concerns? I mean, obviously, no, this, I'll tell you what I think, this is, to me, this is a kind of a no-brainer. This just needs to happen because it's, it's, it's to keep efficiencies in our.
No-brainer that was caused by state. Well, realizing the going into it.
Unfortunately, but we're the.
No, whoever the vendor is.
Escaped goat that has to.
Do about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in their pocket. That's what that's all about. I get tired of that stuff. Jeez, oh, Pete.
I so moved that we approve the prosecutor's office updating or getting the software from CarpeL uh, solutions at an initial cost of ten thousand dollars with an annual maintenance fee of two thousand dollars, um, along with their appropriate budget adjustments.
If I can add one swift thing, um, it's not necessarily necessary for this, but it's the law enforcement, all the law enforcement agencies would have had to do the same thing. What law enforcement agencies did is banded together and went to the community foundation for a grant for the ten thousand dollars for their plug that they need. So there's another ten thousand dollar piece that will be coming through. However, that was funded by a community foundation grant, and then the agencies themselves, the five agencies in our county, are gonna split that two thousand every year.
A year.
Each will pay a fifth of two.
Okay, you mean the motion?
Yep.
Somebody second it? Okay, motion by Commissioner Shopsi, second by Commissioner Bailey. Is there any questions? Okay, roll call please.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes. Motion pass. Okay, uh, consideration to appoint Michigan Works Workforce Development Board member to your term. Is there anybody here?
There isn't. So this is just a.
This is against Seth Godley, right?
He, his term is expiring, the end of June.
This is a reappointment and he wants it.
Guys, and we don't have any other evidence.
What's his name?
Seth Godley.
The community member, I'm gonna tire, I think.
Yep.
I make a motion that we uh, reappoint Seth Godley.
Support Michigan Works Commission.
Okay, um, motion by Commissioner Bay and second by Commissioner Shopsi. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion pass. Okay, consideration of unfinished business. And so we now go down to.
I make a motion that we suspend our regular meeting and go into the airport.
Report.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Bailey, supported by Commissioner Gay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
We will enter into the airport meeting.
Not gonna be here tonight. It will be. We'll just uh, briefly go over a few things, but there's a couple of things on there we need to talk about. Just got one up there. Okay. Right. If you'd like me to, uh, Madam Chairman, I can do this, or if you want to, that's fine, because there is the.
Yeah.
Let me do it?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the first thing you'll see is the airport uh, financials for May. Um. It's up here, I'll talk about it. And why this goes so slow sometimes. Here we go. Okay. As you'll see at the top, we still have a, we still have a healthy fund balance of one million one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty. Twenty-two. And so it's, it's, that's a, that's a normal uh, activity. Um, so that, if you had any questions, I'll have to dig into it, but other than that, uh, that's the financial statement you have in front of you. It, it's basically been the same. We have a few expenditures. At the bottom, you'll see uh, that things were purchased and, and not, I'll to, to, to say that, next month we'll start seeing bigger expenses. Because next month, I'm, I'm anticipating adding a tractor, which is about fifteen thousand dollars, so that'll come out of there. And uh, and I'll talk about it in a few minutes. We're gonna start uh, repainting the hangars, and that's gonna be about uh, forty thousand. So, the next one. Uh, airport, airport manager's report. And. Boy, this thing is really working slow again. He's not gonna come up. Matt and I worked on this. When nobody's in here, it works fine. You come in here and just.
You got nothing to load it with. The attachments will load it.
No, that's what I'm saying. We've got an issue. Um, uh, as, as, Tom, I'm gonna stay a friend, it's coming. The airport manager's report consists of several different things I can talk about. They did print these out, fuel, the fuel that we've used for the month. Um, so far this year, we have sold a Jet A, uh, get from, from January till now, five thousand and three gallons of Jet A. Of one hundred low lead, we sold seven thousand sixty-six gallons. Which, if I knew how to read this silly thing, um, we are a little bit ahead of what we were the previous year. So the gas and fuel sales are going good. The biggest problem that any airport has when they're selling fuel is bad weather. We had a lot of it this spring. So there wasn't a lot of times we didn't sell any fuel because nobody was flying. Obviously, now it's picking up and things are being a lot better, but uh, in the April, March, April timeframe, and half of June, it was terrible flying weather, and then they just didn't fly. That was part of the problem. Um. Then, we're on the uh, what do I got here? Uh, he also has printed out uh, the different uh, things from the mowing and doing other things. Uh, he gives a list of uh, the places that they mowed so far this year, different runways and, and all that, so they're showing that the airport is being mowed by the eight, eight chapters, so they're living up to their agreement. That's okay. And finally, we got, we got it up here, so let's see what we can find. All right. Um. We had a couple of jets come in, one, two, three, four, four different jets, that I can see, five different jets in the month of May. So, six different jets. So there's six jets that came in and out in the month of May, which is good. Anytime we get jets in there, we, we, they usually buy a little fuel, or, or the biggest thing that I look at is economic development. People are flying in there to do business. And the biggest, the biggest uh, population that we have in Grasha County that does business is farmers. Um, you take, you take DeSager and Van Loon, all those farmers, they have cattle operations out in Kansas. And what they do is they, they, they actually rent a jet. Jet slides in, picks all these guys up, flies them to Kansas to their cattle operation out there. And then they check on that and they come back. So they'll leave at seven o'clock in the morning, get back at five o'clock in the afternoon. That's how farmers work nowadays. What they do is they take the, the deak, and you know, well, deak, a lot of people won't know what deaks are, but those little calves when they're born, they get them weaned, and then they ship them off to Kansas to be finished, what they call finished. All right, and then they're I.A. and brought back. They have babies, they go to milk, and it just starts the operation, and they're just a circle. But they ship them all, I, I've always found that fascinating. They always ship them to places like Kansas, Oklahoma, those places to do that. It's just a fascinating thing. My point is agriculture is the king in Grasha County. They are, if we didn't have good agriculture, we would be even poorer than we are now. And they do a great job, and I tell you what, if you ever want to have a nice talk with anybody, talk with a farmer. They're nice people to talk to. Right, Steve? There, it's all good. Um. Let's see, he uh, has got on here, uh, we're preparing to power wash the paint to tea hangars, uh, doing some uh, still mowing. Uh, we're getting another eight thousand gallons of one hundred low lead to be delivered. And of course, I talked about the young eagles. Um. What else we got? I got that already. So that's basically his report. And if you've got any questions, I can take them and get back with him on that, but, oh, we got one other thing. Uh, I don't know if I got it here. Um, we had a gentleman that was at the airport for thirty years, and he's gotten older now, and he has moved down to the Jackson area to be with his son and his wife. So they, they, another, another person bought the lease, and there, there were some lease agreements in there that we don't have to approve of, but I, that I'm not aware of that we have to prove, they're just in the report.
My question would be about that very thing. The lease agreement, this is like from two thousand and nine?
Yeah.
Are they updating?
Yeah, that's what we gotta talk to you.
Okay.
I don't know, I, your meeting. That Dennis didn't say anything to me about anything. I was like, is this?
I would suggest that you go ahead and authorize it, subject to legal review and update. It should be looked at.
Yeah, yeah.
Dennis wandered in and.
Okay, so I wasn't sure.
That's my thing.
But these were the documents that came from the city.
No, I would.
They used.
That's why I wasn't prepared to do anything about it, because I didn't see anything that.
No, it'll be back, so we can have a legal, a legal looked at.
Absolutely, I mean, this, well, I almost told you I'm so. My priority is, I wanted to make it before I brought it up, because I didn't know what was going on.
It's just as easy to do it now and just have, we'll see that it gets done.
Yeah, well, let's just get this paper right, and then we'll bring it back. We'll approve it, that's all.
Okay, that's fine with me.
That's, you know, that's them.
Someone asked me, apparently when we were looking at taking the airport over, one of the things that we're, and we're doing it with the fuel new, the new fuel farm is part of our uh, to try and make the, the airport be self-sufficient. And I know one of the things they talked about was uh, having an on-staff mechanic. Has anything, because all these aircraft.
Working on?
Okay, that's, they're still working on.
Extremely rare to find.
Hmm.
Um, we, we've contacted two different schools now.
Hmm.
And that's the route we're going, is that we've put feelers out, and I put feelers out with, with Seafords who do, who do the uh, ground dusting.
Hmm.
And he, he's been looking too, because he needs a can, also needs a mechanic. So, uh, yeah, I, I've talked to quite a bit about trying to find that mechanic. So it's, it's, it's in the works, but it's just one of those things that has to, what's came first.
If we hit that, I think it's something that will draw people into flying into the.
There's more aircraft coming in. Don't thought about it. If you have a full-time mechanic, then that's, that brings jets. And brings, and brings, uh, you know, every, every plane has to have what they call an annual. And so that brings a lot of people to the airport. We, we're fully understanding that. Let's just find them. That's, that's hard.
Okay.
All right, well, I also.
I think you might want to set the new meeting.
I was just about ready to go to that.
Okay.
Um, we do have a set meeting of the advisory committee. The public meeting, these meetings have to be, need to be published. And you'll see in there for the next one is July ninth, and then through, through the rest of the year. Uh, and having said that, I would make a motion that we accept that schedule for the advisory committee meeting.
Support.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Bailey and supported by Commissioner Shopsi. Roll call.
You don't have to make a roll call. I'm just giving you something to do.
Okay, all those. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion pass. I was just trying to give her something to do.
She was busy. Okay. Uh, if there isn't any other questions.
I, I move to leave the airport meeting and go back to a regular meeting and then go to the finance.
Okay, motion is, oh, second, we're seconding it up.
Or to leave the airport meeting, going in two separate ones, Angie? All right, yeah. I motion to leave the airport. Yep, back to our regular meeting.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
And Tim, are you getting a motion to go to the finance?
There we go.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Gay and supported by Commissioner Shopsi. All those, those agree, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion has been accepted.
Okay, Bailey came up. Yeah. Um, first thing you see is the cash balances. Uh, they are normal. We have not done anything to change that, and so we'll see it. Between the general fund and the liquid tax fund, we have a total of fourteen million, three hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. And it, it tracks, everything's good. So, if there is any particular questions, we'll move on from there. May check registered. Now, last month, the question was asked about commission on aging had dangerous, wasn't, what was the term on it? I've forgotten. Dangerous, hazardous pay, hazardous pay. Well, come, come to find out, that was put on by area agency five during COVID. And they haven't been able to get area agency five to stop it. So these people get paid, it's, it's, it's a, it's a stuff. I don't know, they don't know, they just, their agency, that's how they're paying it. That's from the area agency. It's not coming directly out of our pocket. It comes out of theirs. I don't know why. I don't know why.
Okay, I have a question here. On page three.
Page three.
For sexual harassment training.
Yeah.
Whose budget did that come out of?
No fund.
It's on page, oh yeah, sexual.
Yeah.
Oh, that's three thousand dollars.
Yeah, every year we do that. That's for everybody. Have to happen.
I think the staff is adults, working in an adult place. I'm just surprised, and especially for three thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars, that's a lot of money.
It is.
It is necessary, believe it or not.
If you don't have it, you're opening yourself up to a lot of liability.
It's a failure.
Unfortunately, the world that we live in, it's still necessary.
It doesn't, it doesn't work that way anymore.
It comes from you with the
That's what I call, you know, we're suffering here each time soon. Well,
That's a lot of money.
We know that, but we have people that have gotten onto a lot of problems in this old staff because of those problems.
Okay, I think and then there's another one on the same page for seventy-three thousand, what is this? I can't even pronounce it, M I S, A C W I S replacement for seventy-three thousand.
Is that an abbreviation?
Michigan. Is it abbreviations, M I S, A C W I S. The plus right there. For seventy-three thousand.
There is so many abbreviations.
This Michigan.
Oh, no, I was, I was gonna write. Where's that?
I, I'm thinking that's something to do with the childcare fund.
Oh, child, child, yes, sure, probably childcare.
Money that moves back and forth for state wards, corporate wards.
What page is it on?
Michigan State through three. Committed Child Welfare Information System.
And that's what it is. Do with the kid.
That's through the court system and the place where kids that are, the white blood or kitty. Foster is
It's the one we, all that stuff, we preload that, you know.
Something you're gonna pay and there's no, you have really no choice, and, and funded state mandates.
I don't know if commissioners will remember that, but that child welfare fund, we have to preload. We put seven hundred and twenty-five, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it every budget year. Have to put it in there.
Here's another one, last vault toilet payment.
Yeah, that's
Thousand.
The parks.
That's the parks.
Yep.
That's parks.
For the vault toilets, the toilets out there are what they call vault toilets, they have an enclosure, they had to be
Okay.
Re, basically rebuilt, uh, they were rotted. Before they fell down, we had to spend lots of money, we spent
More for what do I call pump and dump.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Wow, they asked a lot of money, wow.
Yeah.
Well, here I thought for sure, Jan, you were gonna ask about the toilet rebuild kits.
Where's that at? I haven't, which page is that on?
Gets on page two.
Two? How did I miss that? Just a minute, wait.
If you didn't have, Jan, you'd be in trouble.
I have two. What do I?
In the second page four, it's on page four. Four, about a quarter of the way down, toilet rebuild kits for six hundred and, or no, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents.
That is parts that fix toilets.
Thanks for helping, Steve.
It's kind of like a shitty kind of deal.
It could be, depending on how you look at it. I was just messing with you.
Okay, couldn't believe I missed that one. How's Mrs. Credit Card Bill? Oh, it's for a conference, somebody went to a conference and kept in the money, got their money back, okay. Okay, here's one on page six. For fifty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. C D, May twenty-fifth furniture install payment. What is that name?
Where's that at?
Page six.
Yeah, says C D.
C D, May twenty-fifth furniture install pay.
Essential dispatch, yep.
Okay.
It's all that, if you, have you been out to the nine-one-one center or the central dispatch? And they completely redid the interior, that is, all the new chairs, tables.
Nice.
Very, that's very nice, yeah.
I would, I would
Very modest.
Hey, sometime if you get coming through Ithaca during the day, just stop by, ask for Dave, he will show, he'll let you go in there, it's amazing.
It's, it's very, very, very modern, it's
Modern technology, it's really good stuff, I like it. Yeah. That's a pass through. Anything else?
I'm still looking here on page eight. Yep, I have another one circled here, April credit, that must be somebody that went to a on a conference. Here's one, April two thousand twenty-five for ten thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and twenty-seven cents. That was at, looks like this is at the jail. But it just, it just is
Barney Castle, that's a fuel.
Okay.
Barney Castle. Patrol car gas.
That's always interesting to read these.
I try to get better at some of it, it could just say fuel, they're in that description.
Yeah. Here's one, May appropria, appropriation, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Okay.
What page do you want?
Page nine.
That's a district court, mid Michigan district, Cal.
For Health and Burden, yeah.
Okay. I'm moving right along here. And the rest of them, I think. We had to pay principal and interest for ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars. Wow, that's a lot.
What page do I know?
Our payment, I don't know.
Page eleven, let me see. Go across.
Like the payment of the, uh, retirement.
Isabel, you paid it to Isabel Bank. That's a lot of interest.
That's train.
Yep. Drain commission.
Drain commissioner.
I've paid the others, George, with wire.
Oh, yeah, wouldn't be on there.
But, um, that's, yeah, this is all banking strain.
Oh, trains.
Train lines.
Yeah, call you all a burning for spending money.
Yep.
Well, it's all on the taxpayer, every money he spends, taxpayers pay for it. He put in greens.
Usually they tell more about what these are for. Like here's
Those I paid I wire, the other ones, um, either pays, and that's what you're seeing there, so I do that nice creation for what was
Man, it appears in that, uh
She takes them that.
These are, these are all new, usually they've put more than this in there. Two thousand twenty-five third quarter invoice, thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars, two seven cents, that's on page eleven.
It's all drain commission stuff.
That's okay.
That'll bank it soon as we can.
You can read
No, this, this is Michigan, yeah, this is working, it's come.
Oh, over there.
She can tell these workers come from.
Okay, I apologize.
Like I said, it takes over sixty thousand dollars a day to run the county.
Yep, right.
That's just a fact, and that's what you can do.
Okay, I'm all done.
Okay.
That's pretty good.
Move on to the, the May revenue expenditure report then. And there you might wanna talk about.
Yeah, just as an aside to this, I would note that, um, there are a number of budget adjustments that need to be
Good.
made through the budget process, we're identifying some
Right.
and it'll be either July or first meeting in August at all, we'll be in the, go through those.
Okay.
Anyways. Okay, you know, we've made some, we've made some decisions here actually, that sold money, but it never authorized any budget changes.
Yep.
The books are a little, we're getting them straightened out, so I, don't panic.
We'll have to.
There's another one.
So the things, decisions we made tonight will affect budgets that need to be adjusted in order to cover, so when you start buying software and
Yeah, well, that's why the, the agendas I write authorize appropriate budget adjustments, so I'm not afforded to go and do some of that stuff too.
Trying to eliminate a lot of that, but we have so many unforeseen things in government, it's amazing. You got a nice balanced budget on, uh, the end of September, and first of all, it's not balanced anymore. It is.
You're trying to clean up some of that, though.
Yeah, and
Get better.
Any questions on the May revenue expenditure report? Hey, Treasurer, you're up. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. All right.
Good evening. My, uh, usual reports. Thing new, the, um, interest is holding pretty well.
Yeah, it's amazing how well it is.
It is, isn't it?
Yeah.
I think so too.
I thought by now we'd, while we've been down to the two and three.
No, but it's, it's not, it's good, and I don't expect a lot of change in that for the rest of the year. I might be wrong, but to finish out our fiscal year, I really don't see a lot of change.
I would, if they change anything, it'll be about August when the feds drop another point, other than that.
That'll be close to the end of our fiscal year, so here's your
Yeah.
Your usual report that I get, um. So, let me see. For the bank transfers, does anybody have any questions on those? Those are going to, um, decrease quite a bit, because we have gone back to the old way with district court, we will no longer be doing all those transfers for them. So it, it was just a lot of unnecessary work for both sides. So they will be, we're doing that, and, um, between their bond account and their, um, the account that they use. And then there are the receipt distributions. Anybody have any questions on any of those numbers? Silence?
There's a lot of numbers.
Yeah, a lot of numbers, that's where all, that's what all we take in in a month, and all of the places that we put it, we get a hold of it. So we're in the middle of our foreclosure cycle.
Not going.
It's going okay, we had a lot more this year than what we usually do.
It's well
Yep.
Economy didn't do very well the last
Right. Yeah, so we're in the process of maintaining them, cleaning them up, getting, get them ready for auction, so.
Twenty, yeah.
Thirty.
Thirty of them.
Mm-hmm.
That's a lot for us.
It's a lot, usually we're twelve, fifteen.
Yeah, I was gonna say around fifteen is a high.
Yep.
Thirty of them.
It's a lot.
I'm sorry, I missed a little bit of that, are you talking about the, um,
Foreclosure.
Foreclosures?
Hmm.
I have two people that are interested in, in being part of the auction.
Yeah.
So can they go out and, when can they go out and look at, to see what
They, we don't take them out to see, but we have virtual tours on our website. All you have to do is go to the website, and we've got pictures, of course, they're not all there yet, because we're not to that point yet, but as it gets a little closer, and our auction is going to be, it's twenty-first, if you want to let them know.
It's twenty-first.
Just, we've got a link right on our website that takes you right to the website that handles all the auctions and all that information.
Okay, so if somebody, like somebody says, okay, how do I do this, I tell them to go, go on
Go on our website to the treasure, under the treasurer's office.
Sure.
At the bottom of the front page, there's a link that'll take them right to that.
The bottom of the front page.
Or they can give us a call, and I can help, you know, help them through it if they have any trouble.
Right now you're not, there's some on there, but they're not all on there, is that right?
They're all on there, but all the information isn't quite there, because we're still gathering photos and, you know, different
And how many homes? How many homes do you have, do you know?
Uh, let me count, give me a call tomorrow, and I can
Okay, two people are interested in homes.
Okay.
Although one might be interested in property.
Okay.
Farm.
Can let you know, I, I'll have to go on and, and count how many actually.
Set of thirty properties approximately, right? Yeah, is there an area that is more prevalent, I mean, obviously
Malma has quite a few properties.
That's the largest I've, I was assuming.
Malma.
Be, you know, taxes over there.
Mm-hmm. I know, I live there.
I'm gonna do the summer taxes, when we, we come
Pretty quick.
The summer taxes?
Yeah.
July first is when those bills go out, and they're due September fourteenth.
Yeah, pretty quick, can't say, they just, well, next week.
And those are the big ones for the city of Malma. It's the opposite for all, everybody else.
Else. In Malma.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you know, they're all
Bigger in the summertime, the, why is that?
It's
Smash my mailbox.
Then they decided, I think maybe because, I don't know, I'm just guessing, because bills are higher in the winter, maybe to help people out to, you know.
Doesn't the winter taxes go root schools?
They did that to help solve the state financial crisis, move the counties to
They did switch things around, and so they had more, more money coming in during the soft period.
It's a very grown bookkeeper, is what that was.
Yeah, it was way
The schools, stuff, you know.
School and county operating, or state and county operating.
Hey, do we have any questions for the treasurer? Ma'am?
Okay, thank you. If anybody does have any questions after the meeting, just, I'm always, I'm always available, just give me a call, my door's open.
Oh, in that regard, I would make a motion that we, we would return back to the regular scheduled meeting in the, for the purpose of paying the bills. Or
Okay, the motion has been made by Commissioner Bailey and supported by Commissioner Shopsi. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion pass. Okay, next on here is, uh, public comment, is there anybody, anybody here that would like to do public comment?
Starting, see in your hand?
Hello?
You just stretched it, okay.
No way there.
Public comment, would you like to say anything? Okay. And before we adjourn, I have an annual report here, we didn't speak about this, two thousand twenty-four. Michelle.
That was Michelle, it's still waiting.
That was
That's her report.
I brought that up.
I, I motion adjourned.
I support that.
Okay, for motion by, uh, Commissioner Gay, supported by Commissioner Bailey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Make sure you have one comment, we don't do this, I'd be on the You mentioned the township that was looking maybe for some grant assistance.
Right.
I'm gonna encourage them to reach out to the Township Association.
F T A. Yeah. I know, I did, I did say that, but they were looking at everything, and I, when I don't, we don't